Good evening, Minot. Welcome. This is our Minot Area Chambers School Board Forum. Let me turn my phone off, sorry about that. And I am your host. My name is Tom Rafferty. I'm chairman of the Minot Area Chamber of Commerce. We're going to get moving in right into our program here shortly, but I just need to go through a few ground rules and please submit your questions whenever you can. You can start submitting them now and we'll have somebody bring the questions to me. I can't guarantee we'll get to everybody's question. With that, we'll get into the ground rules. This is a forum. It's not a debate. So keep that in mind. We're going to allow two minutes for each question for each candidate. And when you submit your questions to us, please make sure it's a question and not necessarily an opinion. So I think with that, everyone kind of understands. With that, I'm gonna, we're gonna get right into it. I'm gonna name the candidates and then we're gonna let them each start with a self-introduction. So we have, first of all, I'll cover the election too. It's June 9th, nobody forget that. And I, as I talked yesterday, if you get this in the mail from the Secretary of State, you need to mail it, but fill it out and mail it back, which I have not done yet. So I need to do that. And they want you to do it ASAP. If you have any questions about that, contact your county auditor. So there are six people running for the Minot School Board, and there are three seats. We have incumbents Jim Rossstedt, Mark Lyman, and Mitch Kraft. And the challengers are Justin Amon, Mike Gesner, and Bonnie Berryman. With that, I'm going to get right into introductions and we'll start with Mr. Amon.
Okay, thank you, Tom. My wife and I were born and raised in Minot. We both graduated from Minot High. I went to college at U N D and got a degree in accounting. I got a degree in civil engineering from Ohio State. In 2011, I moved back to Minot and started working at Ackman S. Fold. And I've been working as a civil engineer designer ever since then. We have three children. Two of them are in school and the third one will be starting school in a couple of years. I wanted to run because I have a vested interest in the school board, in the school system with my children, and I want to be a part of the change and not just complain about things that are happening.
Mrs. Berryman, it's your turn. If you want to hit that button, yep.
Okay, my name is Bonnie Berryman, and I taught in the district for 35 years. I then ran the gift store at the hospital. And then I got sick and so I took some time off. And when I came back, my husband decided that I needed to sub, so he sits every day and finds me something to do. And I have been a para, and I have been a long-term para, and I have been, I have been a long-term sub, and I have been a sub. And I, and I have truly enjoyed what I'm doing. I get to see wonderful preparation made by teachers. But my main reason for running is that I care about what's happening in the district. And I think there's some things that won't cost us much money that we can improve on. We're probably not going to have a lot of money. And so we're going to have to be very creative. And I am creative. I do like to spend money, but I am creative.
Thank you. If you want to turn your mic off, please. Mr. Gesner, you're next.
Mike Gesner. I was born in Botnau. My family moved to Minot, and I attended Minot Public Schools, grades three through 12. I graduated here from Minot High School. I participated in band. I played the sousaphone, stage band, the string bass, choir, change of pace singers, student council, honor society, football, wrestling, track, and baseball. I am in the Minot High School Athletic Hall of Fame. I attended, and I graduated from Minot State with scholarships in football and baseball, majored in math. I returned to Minot State and received a Master of Arts in Teaching in the area of mathematics. I taught math for 47 years, just retiring two years ago. I coached football, wrestling, and baseball. I won the Presidential Award in Mathematics Teaching. I was appointed by the governor to the Teacher Fund for Retirement Board and served 13 years, 11 years, which I was the president. I also was on the North Dakota State Investment Board. My wife taught 30 years for Minot Public. Our three children were involved in sports, all sorts of sports, 4-H, horse shows, high school rodeos. Our family also participated in minor trail riders and various sport and hunting groups. I'm running for the school board because I care about kids. I have grandkids in the Minot Public Schools. I want Minot Public Schools to provide all students the best education, to put them on a path for success and satisfaction in a career of their choice. I bring to the board 47 years of experience in education, about 25 years of negotiating experience, and being retired, I offer my time.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft, you're up.
Mitch Kraft. I was born in Minot, North Dakota. Attended Edison Elementary until the fourth grade, when we moved to the family farm. I graduated from Plaza High. After high school, I attended Minot State University, graduated with a master's, or a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management. And we have been truly blessed in Minot. I did enjoy my four years on the board, and I am looking forward to hopefully four more.
Thank you. Mr. Lyman, you're next.
Okay, thanks, Tom. My name is Mark Lyman. I've been a school board member for the last four years. Moved here 17 years ago for a job and thought it was going to take about 18 months, and I'm here still 17 years later. So I've worked for Camwo TTV, Minot State University, Oddne Advertising, and I now work for a company called Hunting Bear. And I'm married, have two kids, both in the system right now, 11-year-old and a 14-year-old. I love the opportunity to make a difference in the community. And so I've enjoyed serving on the Minot Downtown Business and Professional Association. I do some stuff with our local church. I currently serve as a board member for the Magic City Discovery Center. And I am running for reelection, primarily because I think that we've done a lot of good with the Minot Public Schools. And we've got a good direction and a good, a good plan for going ahead. And I want to continue to see that plan evolve. We have a lot of needs. We also have a lot of things that we do, that we do well, that we need to sustain. And I think good engaged leadership and parent support or parent involvement by being on the board is critical for this stage in our community. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Rossstedt, you're next.
I'm Jim Rossstedt, and I have been Minot Public School Board's president for the last eight years, and I've been on the board for 20 years. And I've enjoyed my time immensely. And it's certainly through a number of challenges, including the flood that we went through and had to rebuild our schools. And I think we rebuilt them to the point where they are in better shape than they've probably ever been. And so I was glad to be a part of that. Also, I'm very involved in the community. I serve on the Ward County Commission, and I'm past president of Minot Area Development Corporation. And I am pretty well-connected with our legislators and our representatives throughout our region and city. So I've enjoyed my time, and there are challenges ahead of us. And based on the present economy, I've had to do this before several years ago. And we will do what's necessary and make the tough decisions to get Minot Public through and still take care of our kids to the very best of our ability and our financial ability. So looking forward to the challenges and willing to continue to serve Minot and the area.
Thank you. We'll get right into questions. You each have two minutes, and you'll get a 30-second warning when you're running out of time. We're going to start right away with what's on most people's minds lately. So the first question, and we'll start with Mr. Amon. What do you think the start of the 2021 school year will look like in terms of when school starts, what measures might be taken, and possible restrictions put in place? What should we do to help our students succeed coming back from this school year into next?
Okay, I know with the, with the current coronavirus, now things are going, no one really knows the timeline of how this is all going to play out. I think it is best for our students if they are in the classrooms. I think that's the best education setup. But I know that may not be a reality, at least 100% at the start of the school year. I think that after this occurred in March, the teachers have, have, in some respects, scrambled to get their plans together for distance learning. I know over the summer they're going to refine all their plans. If we need to have distance learning in some effect, that may be possible. But I think we need to strive for as much as possible, get the students in the classrooms so they can be engaged with the teachers and, and get the best education.
Mrs. Berryman, you're up.
Well, I agree with Mr. Amon that I don't know that we know what's going to be happening. But whatever happens, I think we should start when we're supposed to. I think we need to get some kind of sense of what's been, what normally happens with children back into their lives. We also will probably have to have some of them stay home, because maybe their parents have decided that they like that. Maybe we can go back to the learning that's being done over the internet, and maybe teachers don't have to be as stressed, because maybe teachers should share lessons with each other. Because you normally have in a, in a middle school, three or four teachers teaching the same kind of thing. So let's not duplicate what we're already doing and waste some time there. I know that my friends tell me that they get a lot of phone calls. They get a lot of papers turned in without names. And there's all kinds of little problems that can be worked out. But when they come back to the classroom, hopefully they'll be doing what the state wants them to do, or the city, or the school board. I hope that they will wear masks, and I hope that they will wash their hands often and be kept far apart. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gesner.
Safety of students and employees is always the number one concern. The school safety committee needs to be vigilant and meet on a regular basis. The coronavirus pandemic is our current challenge. Minot Public School employees have done a great job in this current environment. I recognize there will be financial concerns regarding the pandemic. I'm wondering what will happen if schools can't reopen in the fall? Is the district prepared to carry on distance learning? Are teachers? Is anything being done this summer to prepare for the possibility of a second round of the virus in the fall, which you have alluded to? Could next year's teacher development training be used to allow teachers to review and share the various ideas they've generated? Maybe all these ideas have been discussed or already done. Could future parent-teacher conferences be held on Zoom? Some of the innovations teachers have implemented with distance learning might have potential for use in their regular classrooms. Looking beyond the pandemic, now I'm, I'm going to go from where I'm coming from. We need to consider overcrowding issues in the middle schools and the current alignment of the high schools. My personal view is that Central Campus should become a third middle school. Then we should build a second high school and have both high schools house grades nine through 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft.
I truly hope that our kids are back in school next fall. We will definitely follow the guidance of our North Dakota governor on what that will look like. I feel that we had a great staff effort to get distance learning in place and to implement that. I have heard a lot more good comments than I have bad comments on the distance learning. But students need to be in front of their teachers for the best learning. I would rather not see another year of that, but we do not know what the future holds. I was very surprised to see the university in California has already canceled classes for next fall. My assumption is, is that's going to be more prevalent in the next few weeks, but only time will tell.
Mr. Lyman.
Yeah, a lot has been said already that I agree with. I think the biggest thing that we're going to have to do is take our cues from the state, from the CDC, from Department of Public Instruction. We want to do what's right to keep our staff, our kids, our support staff, the teachers, want to keep them safe. I think that in the classroom is the best place for them to be. You get the best learning there. I'd love to see some more distance learning applied and see the lessons that we've learned from there work beyond just when we're in a pandemic. I think that hand washing and taking care of those who might have autoimmune disorders, that's got to be a high priority. We've got to figure out a way to make sure that we are doing as much as we possibly can reasonably to make it a safe environment for students to be learning in front of teachers this fall, if at all possible.
Thank you. Mr. Rossstedt.
Yes, I'll agree with my fellow candidates on many of their points. And first and foremost, we will be working with the governor's office and DPI, Department of Public Instruction, and Kirsten Basler. I think they've done an excellent job so far, and, and I'm looking forward to their leadership and the committees they have formed down in Bismarck. And they've also reached out to our superintendent, Dr. Volmer, for his input and help. And then he in turn has also turned to the school board and staff for our input. And I too want to see our kids back in school in late August, September. But having said that, part of my concern is with the kids going back home and interacting with grandparents, or those who have problems with, that have underlying previous health issues. So that is a concern. But I think for the benefit of the vast majority, we're going to have to get those kids back in school. And we will have to also work with the individual problems as, as we're approached with them.
Thank you. I have two questions from the audience. I'm not going to get to them just yet, but just a reminder, keep submitting your questions. We will, we will go until 7:30 unless we run out of questions. So question two, we will start with Mr. Gesner. And it's also related to the current situation. What kind of financial hardships do you think the pandemic will cause to the school district? And what should we be, be doing to plan for it right now?
That's a good question. How do we plan? We've already settled a two-year contract, I think, with our teachers. And we are just going to have to hold off and see what comes. We are having our monies. I would know more from Mr. Rossstedt. If we are getting our monies from next year from the state, our state has been pretty positive about the monies that they've been sending out. But we are going to have to look at the budget and be cognizant of the surrounding activities that are occurring.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft.
I saw a slide that 57% of the North Dakota budget is related to the barrel per oil sale. And that is very scary with the amount of wells that they have taken out of production. When you add to that the announcement of the closing of Coal Creek, and everything that this pandemic has caused on the slowdown, everybody's budget is going to be tight. Some budgets will be terminated. It does not look like a rosy future. Definitely something we can get through, but I don't have an answer on that until the numbers are in front of us.
Thank you. Mr. Lyman.
Thanks, Tom. I, you know, it's 80% of the school board budget, and just over 80% is tied up in people. The cost to, to give someone a salary, health insurance, the benefits, sick leave, you name it, all that stuff. So we have a lot of our over $100 million budget that goes towards people. If we see a lot of students that leave our area, or a lot of families that leave, and we need fewer staff, that's going to lead to some tough decisions. That could help us with the budget, but it hurts us overall as a community. So it's going to be, it's going to be tough decisions, maybe not starting this fall, but it might not even hit us until next year, and next year's budget. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be tough to get the same amount of funding from the state. And we rely on 50, 60% of our money to come from the state. And so if the state has fewer dollars coming in, then there's a good chance that the school districts are going to have fewer dollars coming in. We saw that in 2015, 16, 17, when there was an economic slowdown. So it's, but, but it's not something that you can plan for today or this summer. A lot of it will depend on how many students come back and are in the classrooms this fall. And do we bounce back a little faster? Is it $40 a barrel for oil by the end of the year? That can make a big difference in the state coffers coming in 2021. So we play the long game on this. And we're not going to have high highs and low lows with the budget. Hopefully, we can, we can ride it out for as long as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Rossstedt.
I don't like addressing this topic at all, but nevertheless, it may well be the topic before us. I think we're in solid financial, on solid financial ground right now. And as Mr. Gesner said, we have a two-year contract, and I think our, our funding is secure for this following year. Depending upon what the legislature does, we are, and very well could be, in a situation of decreasing funding. And I've been through this before, actually in the late, late 80s where we went through it. And it was a terrible time to be on the board, because we, we ended up having reduction in force with, with our staff and due to funding, and we had no other choice. And, and we did do it. But we ended up, you know, cutting teachers that were perfectly good teachers, but it was solely based on our financial situation. And we will, as, as a board, do what we need to do to, to get the education done as well as possible with the funding available.
Thank you. Mr. Amon, you're up next.
Okay. I agree with the rest of the answers so far. I do think that we could have some budget concerns coming into this next year. Through 2020, I know that a lot of the expenses are kind of called for, planned out. But as we look into 2021 and beyond, we need to take a hard look at the budget. I don't, I haven't looked at the budget or don't know the fine details of the board budget. But I know that we need to be fiscally responsible. We need to be, be aware of how the state will probably have some shortfalls in the near term. Property taxes locally may take a hit. So those could definitely all affect the budget. And so we need to, need to look as much as we can to try to balance it in the future years.
Thank you. Mrs. Berryman.
Yes. As we move into the rest of 2020, we expect that education will continue to change. An evaluation of things like purchasing or buying more computers or will definitely lead our direction, because we've been leaning that way all along. But because these drastic changes will be mostly financial and class size, I will not, I can't comment at this time about the long-term plan, because I don't know how many students we'll have. I think it's premature to start talking about a new high school. When I was When I was told today by someone at Minot High School that they're graduating 438 or something, and they used to have 700 in graduating. I did see at the school today that they had taken out locker bays, so they're probably building more classrooms in some way. So there's ways that it can be done without costing us tons of money. And we need to be looking at that because all of us are really in dire need, especially people who don't have incomes at this time. So that would be my thought.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next question. And some of you have alluded to this already. There, in, in past years anyway, we don't know what's going to happen for sure this next year. There has been an increase in the number of students, and this issue was raised by several of you in the Minot Daily article that came out today about the need for more classroom space or, you know, how much, what's the ideal classroom number? So the question is, do we need to build more schools? If so, what would be the first priority? And also, how much bonding would the taxpayers be willing to pay for if, if this was a consideration? And we'll start with Mark.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Do we need to build more schools? Yes, we need more space to handle more kids in middle school and in high school. We did a good job as a community on the second time around, about five, six years ago, to vote for additional elementary school space. John Holvin Elementary has been a great addition to our community, additions on to elementary schools like Edison and Perkett and others have been a wonderful needed use. And we are seeing 700-plus kids in these grades in kindergarten for second, third, fourth, fifth grade. They're continuing to go on. We're not losing as many people as we always have as they get older. There's always a little bit of a trickle down in the, in the numbers, but we're seeing 500, 600 kids, 700 kids still in now middle school at each grade. And we're now having to, at Jim Hill, where I've got one daughter that's been there the last three years, they've had to stagger the bells so that they don't have all the kids in the hallways at the same times. The cafeteria is beyond full. They've had to add a fourth lunch period there. They have kids who start to eat lunch basically at 11 o'clock and some who don't get done until almost 1:00. So we need better space in order to better accommodate the best education possible. And I think part of that is a second high school. We are one of only maybe two school districts out of thousands in the country that has a split high school system, ninth and 10th, in a different building than where we put our 11th and 12th graders. And 30, 40 years ago, 40, 50 years ago, when that decision was made, I'm not faulting them for that decision, but today, that decision does not work. That decision should be for the betterment of the kids, the educational opportunity for the faculty, the staff. They need to be two, 9th through 12th high schools in our community, and that is the best way to take care of those kids. It is going to cost us money. The best improvements in our community cost money. The best improvements in our homes cost money. We have to find that time and that willingness to, to invest that money and those efforts into making it better for our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Rosted. You're up.
I've, I've shared in my last response, kind of, we've got to prepare, be prepared for any situation that, that does come, and that is true. But I'm not willing to give up on the economy of North Dakota yet and of Minot. I, I'm optimistic, and I think it's going to come back. And with, as Mr. Lyman has, has shared, we are. Our, our classes of 700 have been sustained and steady, and I think we've got to prepare for those kids. And once again, by having two high schools, I mean, we're, we're the, the, our, our class graduating 430 or 440 or 450, most of the other schools in the state are graduating classes of 300 for their high schools. So we're certainly, with our upcoming numbers, are in the realm where we need to look at another high school. And if, if the right, if we can do this financially and get the community behind us, and it is in the end going to be their decision to build a second high school or not, as we will have to bond for it. And, but I, I think that on the other hand, we owe it to our kids to do the very best we can, and that is to provide more opportunities and build a second high school and do it as efficiently as possible.
Thank you. Back to the left of the room, Justin Amin.
Okay. I believe that with the expansions of our elementary schools over the last five years, I think our elementary schools are properly sized at this time. I am strongly in favor of, of adding to our middle schools and high schools. I know the biggest need is for our middle schools, I think, to, to properly educate these kids. We need the proper room that will allow proper class sizes, allow them to be educated and get into the classes that they need. So we need to start planning for that immediately. I know that planning does not happen overnight with planning and design of, of what needs to take place in, in Minot. I really think we need to move forward right away. I have experience as a civil engineer, working with infrastructure projects, planning with communities, and I think that I would be a good fit to, to help lead the, the infrastructure expansion for Minot schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Berryman.
Well, I'm going to take a little bit of a different aspect. I'm going to look at it like this. I believe that the grades K through 2 are the formative years, and I think the classrooms should definitely be smaller. And I think if they need a para in there to help them, they need one that, that shows up because they maybe have some health insurance. We need to keep our staff at the top. We need to be a little bit different than everybody in the state. We need to be better. We need to find ways to keep our staff happy and our staff educated. And I would say that principals should know their buildings and they should know their staff. We can rely on them. Maybe rather than counting that one teacher has 27 kids and one has 22, why not count the type of students you have in your room? How many learning disabled do you have? How many, how many do you have that are, are known to be problem children? How many of them are gifted? I was lucky enough to be the teacher, started the gifted program back when I had some of these people's siblings in my classroom. And, and there's just different ways. I could have had 35 of those kids that Ava Blake gave me in second and third grade. I didn't, you know, because they were so smart and so good. So there's different ways to do it.
Mr. Gesner, you're next.
As I talked a little bit before about the two, four-year high schools, two, four-year high schools are needed. Ninth and 10th graders need to have a better look at the end game. They're just transferring from a building to a building to a building, and they need this better look when they're in the same building as 11th and 12th graders. This look would explain why they need to take a variety of classes and why they need to do their best also. The second high school would provide students with more opportunities for involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft, we'll end the question with you.
For any of those that do not think we have an overcrowding issue, all they need to do is reach out to any of the instructors at Jim Hill Middle School and ask them for their opinion. Overcrowding in the middle schools is priority number one. Priority number two, our elementary schools are already in need of looking at redrawing the boundary lines so that we have a more even distribution of the space that we're using. And I also agree, two comprehensive 9th through 12th schools are needed in Minot, North Dakota.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question. How would you, how would you rate our curriculum in the schools? Do we need to focus more on certain areas, add new things? Do we need to constantly evolve and change as our economy changes? What ideas do you, would you bring with that issue? And we'll start with Mrs. Berryman.
Curriculum, I love curriculum, but I think that we need to start looking at some kind of different subject matter for kids. Kids need to know how to balance a checkbook. Kids need to know how to pay taxes. Kids need, kids need to know how to write a check. Kids know how to count back change. That's one of them. They also need to know, be more in tune with their health. I'm, I'm, people, I drive people up the wall sometimes because I'm talking about sugar, and we need to educate kids about the detrimental effects that it has. We, they don't get any of that. People that have cancer at the cancer center don't get any training in, in nutrition. That's a sham. We, we've changed, we've evolved, and we need to maybe take a look at some of the things we're doing. We need to make kids ready for the real world. And yeah, we, we need to maybe take out some of the classes we're teaching and add some more.
Thank you. Mr. Gesner, you're next.
I think with the four-year high school and at all levels, if we can see the variety of things that are offered, if we get out to my one granddaughter, I said, get out and try everything. She's trying welding, or she was going to try welding. And she, just see what you like and see what you don't like. I had a friend in college, or a friend in high school that went to be a doctor, and of course, back then, he went for his four years, and then he was going to become a doctor. Well, he stepped in the hospital and didn't like the hospital. Well, maybe we can find, I know right now with our medical career classes that we have, we're in the hospitals, we're out on the jobs, we're trying things out. So we are exposing kids to, we, we do a wonderful job, but there are some more things that we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft.
One of the perks this pandemic has caused on the distant learning is showing our students that they can have an education that is not tied to a building or a classroom. The new opportunities that this will present itself for real-world experience is very exciting. I look forward to that. It was interesting to see that the first public schools taught more of a religion and a virtue and how to be a member of a community compared to the reading, writing, arithmetic that we teach today. The future's wide open, and it does look exciting.
Mr. Lyman, you're up.
Thanks, Tom. If the question's, how would you rate our curriculum? I would say it's above average to excellent. Now, is there always room for growth? Absolutely. And I think that we should keep looking and keep asking, you know, what do the students want? What do the parents want? What does the community need? What do, what does the business sector need? What makes the most sense for as many students as possible? I love the fact that it sure looks like in just my four years on the, on the board that the, the offerings at high school just keep getting, the book gets thicker and thicker every year. We probably add two or three new opportunities for every one that we may take away. And I say take away. We're responding to the fact that there's only a handful of kids who may say, I want to take this certain class in high school. And now we're responding to the fact that the business sector or a group of engaged parents or someone else says, I want my kid to be able to have this opportunity to learn this topic. So I love that we're doing that, and we do that well from year to year. I think that it's been impressive as a state and as a region that we've done more to prepare students for not just, not just a four-year college, because that's not always the right thing for every kid. We need to prepare them for an opportunity to serve in the military, if that's what they want. We need to prepare them for an opportunity to go to a vocational school or a technical college, or learn a skill or a trade, or start right away working when they're 17 or 18 or 19. I think that we need to do as much as we can to allow our curriculum to service them through four, five, or six different broader categories. Then we'll lose fewer students. I agree with what's already been said that we need to have that continuity with 9th through 12th high schools, so we aren't losing those students who drop out between 10th and 11th grade because they have to switch another school. Our curriculum can help that if they stay there and have the same counselor from 9th grade to 10th grade to 11th grade to 12th grade. Right now, they, they have to relearn new faces every two years, and then you throw in the middle schools only a couple of years long. Those things are tough on kids. It's not just the curriculum, it's also about the entire experience. So I think we do above average to excellent, though.
Mr. Rosted.
I'm very proud of the curriculum that we provide for our students, especially in the middle schools and the high school arena that, that is offered to them. And every year, the school board approves the curriculum offerings, and we, where, many times, it's determined by numbers and what the class size will be and, and if we will still keep offering it. So the, the staff does, does pay attention to trying to keep their students engaged, and I think they do a real good job of that. And we're for, one of the fortunate things of being a large school is a vast array of classes we offer, then that's a definite advantage for our students that, that many, many of them take full advantage of.
Thank you, Mr. Amin. We'll end the question with you.
Okay. I believe that the, the main purpose of the public, public education system is to make these students successful as students and beyond. With that, I know that jobs continue to change, the job market. New jobs are created all the time, so I think the curriculum needs to change all the time with the current times. I know that there are different possibilities out there. Legacy high school in Bismarck, my understanding is more of a college model. I don't know that that's right for Minot schools, but we need to look at these different options that, that become available. I, I do know that as a large school, we do have a lot of offerings right now, much more than, than the smaller rural schools, so I'm proud of that, and I, I'm glad to have my, my kids at Minot Public.
All right. The next one is a, is a citizen submitted question, but I'm going to add to it a little bit. The person asked, how will you address bullying in schools? But I'd like you to also just comment on safety in general. Do, what do we need to do to improve safety, or are we good now? So bullying and safety overall. And we'll start with Mr. Kraft this time.
Safety is a very hot topic in today's society with social media and everything that goes on outside of the classroom that deals with stuff in the classroom. As they have spent so much time looking at how to protect the students from the staff, they didn't pay as much attention for that to go in the opposite direction to keep the staff protected from the students. If you look at safety in general, our district has done a wonderful job of protecting all of our buildings as we tour them on a regular basis. It's very encouraging to see how safe my two daughters are when they attend Minot versus some of the other schools in the state. But there needs to be more done on the legislative level of what we can do to reprimand those students that are disrupting the classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman.
Thanks, Tom. I, you know, Mitch is quite right. There's a lot of, there's a lot of buzz around these, and it's not something that you, just when you think you've wrapped your arms around it and you've tackled an issue, two or three others seem to pop up. And so I think that, I think that having open lines of communication with administrators, parents, the faculty, the staff, of course, the, the students themselves, and ask them, you know, how do you want to be kept safe? And how do you want to have bullying addressed? And allow that to... And allow that to, to be something where they take pride in not having these issues in their classrooms and that they're willing to say, you know, we're, we're going to try harder as a group, whether it's a group of students or whether it's a group of faculty or whether it's a group of, you know, outsiders who are coming there for a basketball game, you know, that, you know, I love the school resource officer program and that has done a lot. And we've expanded that onto the base and, and there's a real positivity that you can get from getting to know at a very early age, the, the positivity that can come from having that safety there. We can do more. I think we will do more, but I, but I don't think we're in a bad place. I think we're just continuing to kind of address the issues as they, as they come up and as people make us aware of them, then that's how we become able to address them.
Thank you. Mr. Rosted, you're up.
Two years ago in the, a little over a year ago, when we went to impasse with the, with the teachers over some issues, the safety was one of the issues. And we have developed a safety committee. Having said that, it, it's no doubt a difficult situation and a difficult problem to solve. The, I think some of the student behaviors are different than we've ever experienced before and our, our staff ends up having to deal with them along with principals and we have added school resource officers which are there to help and, but when a situation develops in a classroom, many times it falls upon the teacher to handle the situation. And, and through our professional development, hopefully they can continue to learn from one another and continue to get better at handling these difficult situations and difficult students. And, and also we look to the parents to help solve some of these situations with their particular child. So it's, it's a thing we're going to have to continue to work on and we obviously want all our students and staff to, to be safe, but we will have to continue to work on it. It's, it isn't solved yet by any means.
Thank you. Mr. Amin, you're up.
Okay. I think that the Minot Schools have done a good job of, of upgrading the security in our schools and regulating entrance into our schools. I know that, that more can probably be done to, to make sure that the students and the teachers feel safe. We want the students to feel safe so that they're excited to come to school and the teachers to enjoy their job. And part of that is, is their safety. As we're educating these students, I think we need to work on teaching them responsibility for their actions. Hopefully that is part of it. If, if their, if their actions require them to be removed from a class to make sure that everyone's safe, I hope that can be done. As was mentioned, school resource officers, I know that's gaining popularity all over the country. I know we have some in use and, and I think I, we'd look at expanding that for whatever that is for, for all of our schools if that would be beneficial.
Thank you. Mrs. Berryman, you're next.
Yes. Safety is a top priority and we are no strangers to the fact that we are living in a nonprecedented times and more drastic changes will have to be made in the future, but we can't become complacent. I just read a book entitled, Why Meadow Died. It was about Parkland, Florida. This young man that came in and killed 17 people was on no one's radar. He actually enrolled in ROTC and learned how to shoot a gun. The security officer never came in the building. I'm not saying that's happening in Minot, but it could, it could. And we do have kids because they float in and out and they change classes and whatever, they do slip through the cracks and it's sad. And I, I don't want to be negative, but we need to be realistic about what's happening. Not only do we need to think about gun safety, but we need to think about physical health. We're probably going to have to check temperatures prior to entering the school for all staff and students and visitors. I know that some kids, when you are honored at graduation for having perfect attendance, some kids have been in school sick and I'm not sure that that's where our focus should be on that day. My son graduated with a 4.0 and they didn't even mention him, didn't even mention the 12 kids that had that. Good attendance is important, I'm not knocking it. And mental health. Mental health is another component. These kids are going to come off of this being put in, in lockdown with their parents for all these months and we're going to, they will have kids that have been abused, that have been neglected. We're going to have a whole new component of that and we need to be aware that that's maybe someplace that needs to really be included in safety. So that's what, where I'm thinking.
Thank you. Mr. Gesner, we'll end this question with you.
Students can't learn, teachers can't teach if they are having safety concerns. My job as a school board member would be to provide the students a safe environment so that the public education goals are achieved. I would expect repetitive, non-manageable issues and concerns to be heard at the board level. We as board members need to be aware of things happening in our district. In general, I would expect the schools to have the personnel and resources to deal with situations. Thank you.
Thank you. For this next question, and we'll start this time with Mr. Rosted. I'm not sure I understand it either, but I'll, I'll kind of paraphrase what they're asking. They want input on current regulations in place over teacher displacements. They're saying right now, teachers who have been teaching even for a number of years, five plus years, are being shuffled around schools year after year due to guidelines, some kind of guidelines in place. And then it, it says some teachers have been moved around three years in a row. How do they develop those relationships with students? Do candidates know this is occurring? So Jim, if you could start with that one.
I, I would start by saying that much of that is due to seniority. And as we do, we, we, you know, we've got a staff that we have retirements every year and resignations every year. And as, as they leave and other people, we hire new hires, they are more susceptible to, to moving around the district. And, and we always have to put the teachers where they're needed in, and some of them do. They go from building, from one school to another school. And as they develop seniority, then they, they do end up getting, not move near as much. So it, it is due to that, but they, they go through the process and we're more concerned about the, putting the staff where they're needed for the students and, and the teachers have to go through it until they have enough seniority where they're not the ones moved around, so.
Thank you. Mr. Amin, you're up next.
Okay. I guess I can speak to that specific question as I'm not currently on the board, but I think where that question comes from is probably the satisfaction, happiness of our teachers and staff. I think on the board, we need to listen to all the stakeholders, you know, the students, what their concerns are, the, the parents, the administration, the teachers, the staff. We need to try to see how we can mold all those opinions together and make them all, you know, satisfied with where they're at. Satisfied with their jobs. I think that helps with teacher retention. You know, but I understand that there may be some teachers that need to be moved at times to, to best educate our kids. So, so that's, that's always our main goal is, you know, how to educate our kids.
Thank you. Mrs. Berryman.
Well, having been a teacher and having been, you know, worried about that you're going to be non-renewed or whatever, I, I taught one year at the base and then went into Longfellow and then went back to the base and then came back into town. I mean, it, it happens, but I think there are better ways that can be done. I think teachers should not move three years in a row. That's, that's not fair to them. They need to get to know their fellow teachers, they need to get to know the students and the, and the principal. Maybe some kind of system could be made where you keep track of, of, of who has never moved. It might help them to move. Who wants to move? And, and maybe block it out somehow in a different sort of way so they're not living in fear at all times that it's going to be them and I'm going to have to redo my room in two days because the school is going to be rearranged. Maybe you can wait till the semester and reshuffle the kids, not the teachers.
Mr. Gesner.
We bargained this a number of times. It is a tough issue. Elementary especially is where it occurs. You get to a fifth grade level and when you first start, of course, you have no seniority. And when there needs to be some movement made, maybe there's less kids at that level and then all of a sudden, you're the one that has to get moved and now you've dropped in your seniority. A very tough issue, needs to be looked at in our movement, that this constant movement that was alluded to from year after year is not good for the teacher or for the students. They need to be able to repeat some years and they were at the same grade level so they have some consistency in their teaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft.
One of the growing pains of a growing city are the changing demographics of our students. We don't get to pick where the new houses go and where the new developments are going to be. So every year, we get the report of how many students are in what class and we make the decisions on movements based on solely those demographics. And the system that is in place today is the seniority system. It is a downside that if one particular teacher was moved three years in a row, that definitely would need to be looked at. That is not something that I was aware of, but when you're in the seniority system, the low person on the totem pole is usually the first one to move.
Mr. Lyman, Lyman.
Okay. So I'm not going to, I like Bonnie's ideas about, about keeping track of some of this. I think that that, if it isn't happening already, I would hope that some of our administration could, could do that. Was I aware that that could happen? I think occasionally, I think that's happened for years, that we have some students or some, some of the elementary especially, teachers who, who do get shuffled probably more than they should. It would be a tough one to say to a, a 20-year veteran, I'm sorry, you, you have to move now. Just as tough as it is to say to a one-year veteran, I'm sorry, you have to move now. But as Mitch pointed out, we, we don't pick where our students live and we don't pick who decides to come and go from our community. I know we get even just a couple of days before the school year starts, sometimes we'll still be getting an influx of students. We might get a kindergarten class that goes from 18 to, to 22 or 23 kids in a matter of three days because mom and dad just showed up to, you know, from the air force base in August and now they're signing up their kid or they just got a job and they want to do best by their family. How do I get my kindergartner into XYZ school? They're not easy decisions and unfortunately, when you make tough decisions, it often has tough consequences on, on some of our, our faculty members. For those who, and I'm aware of, of the individual this has happened to, it is unfortunate and, and, and that's the best a person could say about it in, in a larger organization like this. You'd hope that it wouldn't happen to anybody, but you'd be kidding yourself if you didn't think it was happening. So we'll do the best we can with it. I liked, I liked some of Bonnie's ideas about, about keeping track of that a little better so it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. All right. This next one's kind of interesting. It's another citizen submitted question. Other districts have gone to a four-day school week and having Friday as an intervention day. Would this work at Minot Public Schools? And we'll start back with Mr. Amin.
I have heard about that trend growing. There's been a couple more schools in North Dakota that are planning to start that next year. I can't say that it wouldn't work in Minot. We should look at all these, these new trends and it, it may be a good trend, it may not be. In general, I, I have heard that number is something like 71% of parents are both working parents. And so we need to keep that in mind if we're going to reduce the number of days that children are in schools, that that's more days that the children need to be looked after, need to be provided daycare, things like that. So I think it's something to look at.
Thank you. Mrs. Berryman.
I think that would be a fantastic idea and I'll tell you why. Number one, a few years ago, when Dr. Monday was in charge of our district, he took Daryl Leebelt, Cindy Mao and myself to Arizona. We viewed Tempe, Arizona, who had, and I know people shudder at this word, mastery learning. But what in, in essence, we could do is that we would instruct four days a week, find out which kids need to be remediated on Fridays. The other kids are rewarded by going on some kind of field trip or having a movie or, I took kids skiing for about five years until the principal came and saw that a kid could run into a tree and then we stopped it immediately, if not sooner. But I'll tell you what, the grades, getting those kids to go skiing were held over their heads. They had to have good behavior and they had to have good grades and the grades soared and the behavior was better. So I, I think you and I show up because we get a paycheck and kids need to be rewarded. And so do teachers. Maybe a teacher every third week or fourth week needs just time in their room to evaluate what they're doing. They never get that uninterrupted. So again, I, yeah, I think it's, that would be a wonderful idea.
Mr. Gesner.
I would have to think about that. And so we're going to cover the same amount of material in four fifths the amount of time. When we spread it all a little bit, we give staff, but we give the students a little more time to think about it, to regurgitate it, to get the information that we have. Now, it would be nice that, I, I think some states go four days and the fifth day, they have their athletics and they have their activities and they have it all. So we have it on a day, it's all organized. It's not a spread out over six days after six days after six days for kids. If we all did it, maybe, but I like the five day right now. I think it works best for ours and as was stated earlier, you know, we've got what? How many, how many of moms and dads are working? We still serve as the babysitter.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft.
I do not have enough information on the pros and the cons of a four-day school week. It was my assumption the four days was a cost-saving measure to take that fifth day out. On a personal note, I currently don't think our kids have enough school in the five days that they're in school. I would rather see hours added to the week than any taken away.
Thank you. Mr. Lyman, you're up.
Yeah, there are, I've looked into this just a little bit over the last year as I've seen that some of the smallest school districts in our state adopt this idea. There are no Class A schools, there are no large school districts in our state that are even remotely considering this as far as I've understood. And the ones that do consider it have very large boundaries. And so the cost savings, as was alluded to, comes from not having to bus them on that fifth day. Or the cost saving comes into not having to turn lights on in your 1K through 12 school that houses 128 kids. So do I think that it could work in Minot Public? Not based on the limited information that I've seen to date. Do I think it's still worth potentially, you know, exploring some of the pros and cons? Absolutely. I feel the same way about year-round school. And that's worked well for a number of school districts in a number of states across our country. Not just random ones, but in that one, you have to go year-round school as an entire state or an entire region so that it makes sense from a, from a athletics standpoint or a debate standpoint or, you know, so that the whole community... or debate standpoint or, you know, so that the whole community understands that that's the direction you're going. If we're going to go to four-day schools, I think you have to have that, a four-day-a-week school, I think you have to have that conversation with the business and businesses in town too. As Justin said, with all those parents working, you know, how is that going to impact your business environment? Are you going to be able to attract or not attract as many good businesses to your community based on that? You know, we're not the only wheel in this cog. There are many things that, that move around us that we have to be aware of and making one change like this could, could have a ripple effect that we're not aware of. So right now I wouldn't support it, but again, I think it's worth, it's worth asking the questions. It's not, it's not an idea that we should just automatically shoot down.
Thank you, Mr. Rosted.
I would say that the vast majority of the schools that have gone to the four-day week have been rural schools with many times travel distances for an hour a waste in some cases, back and forth to the school. So you're, there it's a different situation where they're adding another two hours to the student's day. And the other thing is our, our five-day week, we are in a sense providing daycare for, for many of our students and, and the parents. And with the number of working families we have, it would definitely cause them a different situation and set of problems if, if we were to try and run four days and when the vast majority of them are working five. So at this time, I, I, I'd have to really be convinced to, to go to a four-day week and I would have no plans at this time at all to support it.
All right, we're done with that one. The next one is regarding school sports. What do the candidates think about reallocating funds from school sports to other more pressing needs and supplementing those funds with private and business sponsors? You know, maybe you could just address school sports in general. Is it a, is it a big cost? Do we need to make changes? What are your thoughts? And we'll start with Mr. Gesner.
School sports, activities are very important for kids. It, it, well, it was for me as I read through all of the activities that I was involved in. I met many people. It, it kept me busy. It taught me a lot about myself. I think that we should continue the sports, but there, there are more than just sports because of the four-year school or four-year high school that with the involvement in the different programs, the welding programs, the FFA programs, the, there are many programs to get into. But backing off on sports, no. Right now, it, it, it's a big part of activities and it's a big part of the experience for students.
Mr. Kraft.
I would agree backing off on that would be a bad idea. It seems from the outside looking in that more of our students are leading a sedentary lifestyle and not as active as say I was when I was their same age. So physical education is a big part of the student's overall experience. Bringing in outside monies to pay for that, you'd have certain people that would feel left out. You would have a sponsorship on the side of, I spent more, that would open up a whole can of worms that I don't see we would want to look into. But if it's trying to save money by taking away money from sports to give it to something else, I feel that we do a very good job of allocating our funds equally.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what has already been said. I, you know, there's more, there's more here that benefits the students and our community than hurts them. When we allow students to do a variety of activities, whether that's a, a drama club, a choir, a state choir experience, where we, we do still ask of these students and the parents to pitch in for this. This isn't a, oh, you're six foot two and 250 pounds, we're going to pay for your football life in high school. There's still blood, sweat and tears. There's still money spent on that. There's people that go and pay to be sitting in the stands and who buy concessions and who stay longer in our community. You know, the drama programs, the music programs, they're, they're quite vibrant here at Minot Public Schools. And we should not be saying, you know, well, just because, you know, times are tough or just because I don't like XYZ sport or XYZ activity that we should just cancel it all. I think, I think that's too quick to, of a judgment to rush to. I, I would support these programs. Are they the reason we go to high school? No. Are, are they the most important thing for a lot of people in high school? They shouldn't be. I think they just add to that experience. They add to that growth opportunity. They make these individuals more well-rounded. They make us more proud of our community. I'm grateful for those who support those programs and those, those faculty members, those teachers, those staff, the community who step up and our coaches and who decide to take a weekend and go spend it in Fargo for a drama program or for a state competition for a debate. I mean, that's impressive and I think we need to continue to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Rosted.
Yes, on a phrase Mr. Lyman used where it's lifelong rewards. And, and it is. Being involved in especially what Minot High offers from everywhere, from the basketball to hockey to drama to speech, all of these are so important in, in lifelong activities and how, how it makes a person better. And I can personally vouch for many of my relationships going clear back to high school, playing against other teams in the area. And we're lifelong friends. And it was on the basketball court that those relationships were established. And another reason for a second high school, we could double those experiences for, for the number of students and, and it would, I just think it would be better all the way around for the students and the community.
Mr. Amen, you're next.
Okay. I want to echo what everyone else has said, that sports are important, equally as important as all the rest of the extracurricular activities. Sports, music, speech, math, science club. I think extracurricular activities are great for, for the students we have and, and add to the value of, of their education. So I, I don't want to put it above or below anything, but I think it's equally as important as, as all of the activities. And we need to, I think, continue them. And like Mr. Rosted said, at Minot High, I think we have a, a large number of activities and that's, that's great and a, a big positive for our community.
Mrs. Berryman will end the question with you.
Well, my father was the recreation director in Minot for many years and so sports are a very important part of my heritage. I believe that students should be allowed to participate in as many of these activities as they'd like and, and we probably need to add more. But I am saddened to some degree that we don't have a lot of kids that ever make the basketball team or ever make the golf team. And, you know, I married, I married a basketball player and he was a coach and we didn't see him a lot of the time. I'm not sure that he was really, I'm not sure people really appreciated the number of hours that we spent, that he spent. My point is that I wish that more kids could participate. I wish that somehow we could come up with a Class B plan within our city, like our Redeemers and Bishop Ryan. Why not take New Ramstead and make it into a Class B school? Why not take Jim Hill and make it into a Class B school? They wouldn't have to travel very far to play. And I said that I wasn't going to say that idea because my sister said, you'll never win if you say that, Bonnie, because the good old boys' club won't vote for you. But I don't care. That's where my heart is. I went to Minot Model and it was the best school in the world because I knew the kids that I went to school with. I cannot say that happens at Minot High School. I do not think a lot of those kids know each other. And I think they could. Again, with revamping and replanning and it isn't going to cost us a whole bunch of money. Thanks.
All right, it's about seven, almost 7:15. I think we're going to do our final question now. And I want to, like last night, I want to end on something positive and happy. So this will be a little unique of a question. And you, this, this is like your closing statement, but here's kind of the theme. If you had the chance to give your school board campaign speech in front of the class of 2020, what would you say? And we're going to start with Mark.
I didn't have my speech prepared. No, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you, Tom. Thank you to the chamber. These forums are great opportunities. Every chance we get a chance to talk about what makes us good as a community, what makes us great as a public education system. I think that's a, another good way to, to, to talk about the things that matter the most. I think that, I think that our school board and our community needs experience right now. And I have four years of experience on the school board, 17 years experience in the community, serving in a variety of ways. I, I think that I would continue to bring a passion from a parent perspective that is needed on the board. And then I think that I would continue to bring good, tough questions. I'm not afraid to, to ask a hard question. I am willing to say no where I think that no needs to be said. And I think I look closely at the budget when we talk about the budget every year. And I know that that's important for a lot of people, that we're using our taxpayer funding appropriately, that we're asking tough questions, and that's what I would continue to bring to the school board.
Thank you, Jim.
I would say that regardless of what happens in this election, I, it's been a, really one of the greatest honors of my life to serve the Minot Public School District as a board member and board president. And I, I am so proud of our schools and what we've accomplished. And I'm proud that our, our graduates, every graduating class that I've been a, a part of and been to the graduation ceremony, I'm proud of what they've done and, and the way Minot Public has, has educated them. And I'm also just as proud of our staff and the pride they take, I think, in, in their students. I think that's one thing that's totally underrated is how much our staff takes pride in their one-on-one relationships with the students. And we have some teachers that are so dedicated and where I'm just happy to be a small part of that equation and do whatever I can to better the education process for the Minot Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Amen.
Okay, I want to thank you for considering me for the school board. I think Minot Public Schools is a, is a great education system. That's a big reason why my wife and I chose to move back to Minot, coming on nine years ago now. But I think we can continue to do better. And that's what I want to help the school system do is continue to change, continue to grow. Looking at the, the positive as we move forward here, I know everyone's having challenging times, but I would tell the senior class that, that this is all testing us. And so by testing us, that should make us all better people in the end, when we come out of this and get back to, close to the, the normal that we're used to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Berryman.
Yes, I would tell you that the reason that I'm running is because I care. The C would stand for children, curriculum and custodians. A would stand for academics, adapting and appreciation. R would stand for respect, responsibility and rights. E would stand for educating, equality and evaluations. And S would stand for support staff, safety and superintendent. I am running to give back to the community which provided me with an opportunities to live a fulfilling, rewarding life. I wasn't the best paid teacher in the, in the United States. In fact, I probably wasn't the best paid teacher in North Dakota because, but it was enough for Dennis and I to establish and have a good home. And when we looked at our finances in December, we were pretty well off. We haven't looked at them since, I'm not going to for a while. But anyhow, I would say that if, when I'm elected, the places I would start with would be rights, responsibility and respect. We as Americans have the right to be educated. We have the right to carry a phone and keep it in our locker, but we do not have the right to have it in the classroom. Having, the use of cell phones in classrooms may impede integrity. All students and staff have the right to access to a tablet to use in an appropriate classroom assignment. Responsibility, students need to be in class. They need to be healthy and stay at home when they are not, same as the teachers. They need to be prepared for classes and tests. Students need to compete with honesty during all activities of their daily work, homework or tests. They need to develop a sense of pride in our country and exercise the right to vote. No bullying must be part of respect. We must continue towards that goal. This means students need to treat both their classmates and their staff members with respect. No defacing of public property, no stealing, no showing respect and showing respect to our constitution, our flag and our leaders. We all have rights, but with rights come responsibilities and respect grows from rights and responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Gesner.
That was excellent. Phone issue, just to say where I come from, phone issue, we, I believe in having the phone put away. Wherever you're at, be all there. Statement pertains to us, our teachers trying to teach, and so we need to have kids all there. We need to teach kids to be proud of who they are, that a whole range of jobs are out there. Become an expert at something, laying carpet, a lawyer, plumber, doctor, et cetera. Life is pretty good and we can do that through our system. I think we do a wonderful job at that. I appreciate this opportunity to get a little say. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll end the question with Mr. Kraft.
I am excited to see six people sitting here today for three spots available. That's very good to see. Your right to vote is nothing that you should take lightly. As the graduating class of 2020, you and every family member involved in your graduation will not soon forget your graduation. Mine is a distant memory. There is nothing exciting that happened in 1995 on our graduation day like what has been going on for you. I am asking for your vote for two reasons. My oldest daughter will be a sophomore at Central. My youngest daughter will be a fifth grader at Edison. I have a vested interest in their education and I want to do what is best for them and the other students of Minot Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, before we end tonight, I just want to thank all six candidates. It, it is truly something for people to put their name forward in a public arena and, and serve the public. Not everybody is willing to do it and we need people in these important positions. So thank you all. I also want to thank the chamber and all the staff at the chamber for helping organize these and the board of the chamber for supporting these forums. I also want to thank the city of Minot for letting us use this facility. I think it's a, a wonderful venue in, in the, in these times where we can't all gather together. And lastly, I just want to encourage you to tune in tomorrow night, same time, 6:00 PM, same channels that you've been watching it on, either Facebook, the city's YouTube or Channel 19. And tomorrow night is the city council candidate forum. So we'll see you there and have a good night. Thank you.